Lisa. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes?
Well, the minutes aren't available yet, so.
All set?
There's no minutes.
The first thing on the agenda is Clearway Energy Group.
Good evening. Tim Sullivan with TRC, representing Clearway Energy. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I understand we're going to continue the correct term based on the abutter notifications. As I understand it, if you remember last time we were here, we informally presented a series of changes to the project and some updates to the plans, a number of which have been under discussion with the Stormwater Committee, some of which were Clearway-driven from earlier on in the design as well. We were asked to come back to this evening for a formal amendment. We, I believe, notified the newspaper, notified the abutters. On our abutter notification, we use the address Zero Williams Street, which is the address that the existing order of conditions is issued to. In discussions with Lisa, the, you know, that potentially created some confusion for potential abutters, as it was the street address for the Arugio Farms property.
Tim, can you hang on a second?
Sure.
No, I can hear it through the microphone.
I'm sitting over here and I can't hear him.
All right, so you really need to speak into this.
Okay.
Well, there's no speakers in here. The speakers are just for Channel 9.
But the fact of the matter is, we got public presence.
No, I know. I'm saying that microphone's not gonna make him louder. He needs to speak louder.
Yes, make up. So, just so everybody knows that Tim mentioned at the beginning, we're not actually gonna open this hearing tonight because the abutters weren't notified properly, so we're gonna continue and open at the next meeting. The abutters are gonna be notified again properly. The abutters were notified of Zero Williams with no map and lot. You may be an abutter and know that.
Thank you, Lisa. So, I've come for two reasons. One, you know, I wanted to be available to the commission or if there were abutters in the audience that, you know, that had questions. I understand that won't happen in a, you know, in a formal hearing process, but I'm happy to stay after and speak with anyone if there are folks that are here for this item. The second item that I was hoping to discuss is, we're in, you know, we're in the situation where the next hearing, which I understand is the 19th, is that correct? Would we be continued to?
That would be the Conservation Commission, correct?
Correct. And the Stormwater Committee meeting is on the 18th. And we've been working really hard, we hope, with the Stormwater Committee and Conservation Commission and other boards in town to, you know, kind of reset this project and get it moving towards construction. And unfortunately, you know, having the hearings the way they happen to lay out kind of creates, you know, creates about at least a month delay for us, as I understand the Stormwater Committee's schedule to be. So, I wanted to see if there was, you know, anything we could do, you know, proactively to try to keep that, you know, keep that momentum moving. And I'd be, you know, be open to any ideas if the commission has any. You know, I understand that occasionally you schedule off-cycle meetings. I believe this was one.
Yeah, this was one.
If that was an option or, you know, if there was another, you know, another avenue available to us just to try to make sure we're all working together throughout the different approvals that are required with the town.
Very good. Lisa?
Oh, well, I'm gonna actually be taking some time off in August. The two week, the week prior to the 19th and the week after, I'm actually taking some time off those two weeks. So, that would be difficult for me. The only thing I can think of, Tim, is possibly reach out next week to the Stormwater Committee and see if they can just push it a week so that you're not trying to meet with them before you meet with us. Maybe you can meet with them a week after.
We'd certainly be open, you know, certainly be open. I understand vacation schedules are, you know.
Then you don't have to wait another month.
Yeah, or, you know, if there's a possibility that we can have a discussion with Todd about conditional, you know, conditional approval. Obviously, that's up to him, you know, up to him and then the Stormwater Committee. So, I'm not, you know, I'm not, you know, trying to speak for them. I'm more, you know, when we looked at the, you know, the calendar of what the, you know, what the next meeting looked like, this was pretty glaring that we were gonna have this, you know, but for this one day, one day gap, it was gonna set everything kind of back at least a month.
Okay, thank you. We will get it together.
So, it's continued.
Okay, I move that we continue the hearing until August 19.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Continued. Gary's. Forrest Hills.
My role this evening on this issue is relatively passive. This is a determination for the commission. I just came to, once again, share my thoughts, once we had heard the review. I mean, from our perspective, as I said last time, we don't have a relationship with either of the engineering firms. We don't know anyone at either of the firms. My only objective in appearing before you last time and this time is, given the level of review performed by one of the peer review engineers already for the planning board and their likely ongoing involvement with the planning board, I was just hoping to get the efficiencies of having one town-side peer review engineer. And I think it could benefit the planning board and the Conservation Commission, and obviously, from a financial perspective, the applicant, because it could put us, if there were more than one town-side peer review engineer, in a position where they have potentially sound but differing opinions and we have no ability to compel a resolution or compel an answer, but we're gonna be paying the bill while it's figured out. And so, I was just basically, once again, hoping, assuming that the numbers are, you know, you know, reasonably acceptable, to just ask that we consider or that the commission consider at least using the same engineer that the planning board is using, which, again, we have no relationship with them whatsoever. It's just having a product that's, you know, basically gonna be looked at through the same eyes on, from the town's perspective.
So, Charlie and I received, actually, I primarily received it and forwarded it over to you guys from Marty Novar, Beta. And I gave you each a copy. Marty says, "Hello, Lisa. I took a look at the site plans and drainage report and adjusted my original cost estimate based on several considerations. Thank you for the opportunity to resubmit this." Marty J. Novar, Vice President, Beta Group.
Okay, I'm going to say that I know nothing about the engineer that the planning board has. We have had an excellent relationship with the Beta Group. They have been thorough. They have been accurate. They, and according to this listing here, they are more than reasonable in pricing than the planning board engineer. I would like to see Beta be hired by us as their peer reviewer for this project.
Could I make a request, then? Because I fear that we are gonna be put in a position where the peer review engineer for the planning board and the peer review engineer for the Conservation Commission, through no contact with us, have differing opinions and are generating potentially very, very significant bills that we're gonna be responsible for, that there be a reservation regarding any billing for, you know, inconsistent or sort of, the time basically spent between the planning board and the Conservation Commission's engineering review component to help alleviate an expense that we're not gonna be able to control. I mean, if Beta has an opinion that differs from Green International, there's nothing we can do about that, but we're gonna certainly be asked to pay the bill. That's my only concern. So, if it's okay that we, you know, seek an exception for those costs and fees, would, you know, I would respectfully request that.
Who would cover it?
Well.
Someone's gonna cover the time.
Right, but I think it's an entire, I'm only asking the entirely avoidable. If Green were, if Green, who is very, who is more than qualified to represent the Conservation Commission, if Green were the Conservation Commission's peer review engineer, that expense wouldn't exist. It will only exist because Beta and Green will have two different opinions. And it may not happen, but.
If they do, yeah. If they do.
If they do, and they may not. Experience tells me that they might.
Or if they come together, this would be an excellent way to come and give you a solid, an even more solid base to work from.
That may be the case, and I have no, certainly, you know, more eyes are always welcome. But my concern would be, for example, they have two differing opinions. It takes some amount of meetings, engineering, plans, plan review, report. These reports are hundreds of pages long. And that, as, if there's any conflict, each peer review engineer who's going to ultimately, you know, be responsible for this is gonna make sure they've thoroughly reviewed it. And I think that's just right now. I think it's probably reasonable to assume that whomever is engaged is likely to remain engaged on the construction side. And I fear that if, you know, Beta tells Green what to do or Green tells Beta what to do and we're going forward on construction, that each will use, you know, each will have a certain level of question or concern regarding the determination of another engineer.
But this.
But Green's, Green's original proposal is $6,000 more, so you're coming out, starting out, saving. I don't understand why Green would double charge you anyway, 'cause 15 seems like a lot to review something they're already reviewing.
Well, I agree with you, and it would probably be one of the only times in my career where I would ever voluntarily pick the more expensive person. It's because I think, and again, for the members of the public, we have absolutely no relationship whatsoever with either of them. I just think that that $6,000 could be short money, given the expense that could very, very quickly add up if we have two different engineering firms looking at everything and potentially giving two different opinions with our engineers needing to review everything also. But I agree with you. $6,000 seems like a very big delta, but I think it could be way less than the long-term cost of having two different engineering firms reviewing the same plans.
You had said that once you're in the field doing work and there's a conflict. Well, this should be resolved before the work is done in the field. This is why we're, this is why you have those differences of opinions resolved beforehand so that you come up with the best solution to your project.
Oh, Commissioner, I'm not talking about there being issues in the field. I'm talking about, certainly, there will probably be, certainly, there will be some on-the-ground construction-level monitoring and review by engineers on the town side. I think the planning board has indicated some desire to have, you know, involvement. I'm sure Seward will have some involvement, Water.
Stormwater Committee will, too.
I don't know if Stormwater will. Our application may, I'll have to talk to them about that. Our application went in, I think, prior to their jurisdiction. But I need to speak with them, and I know, I think the engineers were looking at that as well. But the idea, Commissioner, would be that whoever it is that's monitoring it, I think, will have a better ability and thus, you know, be more efficient in their billing in time if they were the ones who helped put the plan together. That would not be the time to be identifying a possible conflict that could resolve from having two different separate sets of engineers look at something.
Mrs. Goulart from the Stormwater Commission had a question.
Can I answer you a lot, President of Stormwater Committee? I can answer the question. You will come before the Stormwater Committee because you need a Stormwater permit. With a Stormwater permit, there's no way you get a building permit or anything else. That matters, so. When I hear you talk about peer review and engineers, you all know we have a Stormwater agent. He is thoroughly gonna review those plans, and I'm sure he will have comments to them. And if he feels necessary, he may ask for a third-party review. I'm just listening to all of this. I'm still waiting for a public hearing on Forest Hills. When is it gonna be?
So, I would respond to that in two pieces. One, I think your observation on another peer review engineer would be yet another reason to have it be the same engineering firm.
No.
That Green International, who is more than qualified.
Please, don't make decisions for me.
I'm not trying to, ma'am.
You just tried to. What I'm saying to you is, and Mrs. Caldonia and Mr. Frenette happened up, she is a non-voting member to the Stormwater Committee. Mr. Frenette is a voting member, okay? We have a Stormwater agent, who's a PE, by the way. He reviews all plans. He's the one who advises the Stormwater Committee. We just completed another project that initially we thought we were going to need a third-party review, but we were able to work out details and got some new plans. So, I am not saying it should be this company or this company. I'm just saying to you, be prepared to have these plans reviewed by the Stormwater agent. And when he sees what's being discussed and whether it's Company A or Company B, if he has concerns about them, he may not be happy with the peer review that's being proposed. I'm asking again. We're all waiting for a public hearing, 'cause none of us know anything about Forest Hills, other than it's coming, it's coming. And my understanding is, the public hearing that's supposed to take place at the Dayton Middle School has been, the date has been changed. I'm still waiting for that. The other thing is, we were notified that Forest Hills will be meeting with the Totten Conservation Commission in August to talk about some kind of a basin to dispose of stormwater that originates in the town of Dayton and is gonna be disposed of in the city of Totten. My question is, how can they possibly approve a basin in the city of Totten when the town of Dayton hasn't even seen the plans for stormwater disposal? We'd have to approve whatever's happening. And how, we don't even know if what's being proposed over the line is gonna work. So, it just seems to me, you're concerned about two engineers. I'm concerned about a project that none of us know anything about, but I'm here, we're gonna, they're here, we've been engineers and everything else. It's about time the public was made aware of this. And certainly, Stormwater Committee's gonna be there. If, in fact, there are others who believe, like your opening statement, maybe we don't have to get involved. I think you need to enlighten them. Because we are gonna be involved, because we have to be involved. So, it would be great if we could find out, when is the public hearing gonna be held at the Dayton Middle School? 'Cause that was the last thing we heard.
I can answer a question for you right now. The planning board is hearing this matter on the evening of Wednesday, August 18.
At the middle school?
I don't know what they have selected for.
It's supposed to be the middle school.
Okay.
That's what they were planning for, right? Now they did some work with the middle school.
Wednesday, August 18, at what time?
I have it down for 6:00 PM.
At the middle school.
I don't know the exact location, but I don't.
It would have to be that size, I would think. This, I would expect there's gonna be a large crowd.
Yeah, I don't doubt that they're gonna go to a larger facility. I think that was one of the reasons that they, well, I've heard that from many folks. So, yes, if that's the best facility, then that's likely where it will be.
Are we asking for public input at this point? Are we still, we're making a decision on peer review?
Well, public input comes usually after a second. I am going to put my thoughts into a motion that I would like to see Beta be our peer reviewer for the Forest Hills project.
I'll share that.
All in favor?
Now, we have input by anybody else.
Did you wanna discuss peer review services or the project?
How about both?
Okay, 'cause his engineer isn't here to answer questions on the project today.
Can I make a comment?
Of course.
Okay. Doug White, Forest Street. So, number one, I like that you wanna have Beta, and we'll also have Green, because it's always better to measure twice and cut once. And let's get as much input as we can get. So, I agree with that, before you go ahead and vote. The second thing is, we got some credibility issues. I wasn't able to be at the last meeting, but I understand that there was some discussion and a question was asked about what part of this might be in Totten and what part of this might be in Dayton and how big Phase 1 was gonna be. And the answers that were given were not the same as what was given back at the April 16 meeting. So, would you like to comment on those?
Maybe we should have our vote first and then he can take care of.
Mr. White, Secretary of Government, if you believe there's an issue with your credibility, I'm happy to give you my number. You can call me anytime. I'm happy to stay up at the meeting and talk to you.
Well, I'm talking about the things that are said in public.
I'm happy to discuss anything said in public. If there's any inconsistency, which I would be surprised to be the case, don't hesitate to call me. I'm happy to hang around for as long as you want it from me and discuss anything you'd like to discuss.
Yeah, I kinda like them to be in the open record and in the public records.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chairman. You guys have a motion on the.
My just as a comment.
Sure.
The impact, the size and impact of this project to this town, to cut a corner to save them money is ridiculous.
Make sure you sign in, everybody, okay?
We did, yeah. But that's my comment. I mean, we're not gonna save their money. The impact in this town is gonna be unbelievable. So, I think we have to take it, we should check everything, twice, three times.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Phil.
Mr. Chairman? The Conservation Commission in Totten is meeting in August. The only thing they're gonna talk about is this drainage basin. It is our understanding that entrance and exit will be through the town of Dayton. All of the buildings will be in the town of Dayton. It's only this drainage basin that the Totten Conservation Commission will be acting on and having this hearing in August. So, the homes are going to be in Dayton.
And I thought you had a proposal for a number of homes in Totten.
There's been a lot of discussion about that, and there was also a discussion that they might bring sewer and water in from Winter Street. All I can tell you, as of the Conservation Commission meeting in Totten that we attended, not relative to this project, because they keep continuing it in Totten also, but they said that the meeting in August is going to be that basin, period, all right? And everything, all of the utilities, will be coming in through the town of Dayton. Water, sewer, obviously, electricity.
Phil? And for the record, I just want everyone to know that Michelle Rustino, the conservation agent in Totten, had expressed that she would like to share peer review services with Dayton when it comes to wetlands and stormwater. So, we are, this, not this, this proposal includes a meeting in Totten and review of that basin. That basin is part of the same stormwater system. So, Beta will be reviewing it for that as well. You're welcome.
Okay, we have the motion made and seconded.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Beta Group is our overseer for Forest Hills.
Okay, I move that we continue the hearings on Forest Hill to, as the project evolves. You know, we can do it 8:19 or whenever, you know, they have some information ready for us.
I thought what the board had previously determined, the commission had previously determined is that they wanted the peer review engineer to conduct their review after having been selected. And, I mean, I'm fine with that if the.
No, no, this is fine. We understand that. That's why I kinda hesitated when he said 8:19. We can put it to 8:19 and then just continue it from there.
Well, that's fine. I just wanna give.
Yeah, no, we're not asking you to come back. You stay home and play with the kids.
I was actually more that that might not give Beta very much time to do what they need to do.
No.
Well, yeah, so they're not ready, you know.
I'll second that motion.
Motion was made to continue the hearing to our next meeting. Charlie seconded. We're gonna vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Continue to 8:19. Reed Brothers are limited partners.
They're not here yet, so can we take everything out of order? They're not here yet. They're not here yet. Can we take it all out of order?
Sure.
Okay, then you guys have to make a decision to take it out of order. You have to vote.
What do you think, okay?
Skip over to the commission agent discussion items.
Okay, I move that we take items out of order from the agenda and move on to the.
Or the.
Commission agents' discussion.
I'll second that.
Or the item on Mr. Christofili. He's before that.
Okay.
Has there been a motion and a second?
Christofili?
Yes.
To take it out of order.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Which motion?
Oh, I thought you made the motion. No, I'm sorry.
We have an item here.
Yeah, we need to vote on that.
You wanna do that?
All right.
Thank you for coming.
I'll make the motion that we, that we take items out of order from the agenda.
Why don't we finish this first?
No, it's not here.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. The motion should be, I think that we take any agenda item and list what the number is out of order. You don't say agenda items. You must identify exactly which items you're taking out of order. So, what's the number of the one you wanna take out of order?
There isn't numbers.
There's no numbers on them.
Charlie doesn't do them with numbers.
All right, then what's the name of the item?
That's what you have to do.
You have to say, I think that we take agenda item and say what the name of it is out of order.
The name of, it's discussion of.
Frank Christ.
Board Organization, Frank Christofili, the associate member who hasn't been present. Thank you.
Okay, I move that we take the item concerning Frank Christofili out of order to be discussed at this time.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
We'll table the Reed Brothers and we'll discuss Frank. Or we'll just delay it.
He has not been here. He was an associate member.
He got.
He has not been to a meeting in a year and a half.
He last attended on January 2020.
I'll entertain a motion.
You wanna make the motion?
I'll make a motion that we remove him as an associate member. He doesn't seem interested. He's had plenty of chance to come here, and he hasn't. He was interested in the solar development up on. He was interested in the solar development up on Williams Street. He lost interest after that.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whoa, 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 Mr. Chairman, point of order. I'm sorry.
No, no, don't be sorry.
You should, the vote, first of all, has this gentleman notified you taking this action tonight?
Um...
In writing?
No, not yet, but when I spoke with the Selectmen's Office, they said that according to the Board and Committee Handbook, if he hasn't attended at least 60% of the meetings, then we could do that.
Has he gotten that handbook? I know some of us that got to have to sign for it.
I gave these guys, I don't know.
What I'm saying to you is, there's a procedure that has to be followed. If he hasn't been notified, didn't get the handbook. If he got the handbook and didn't read it, that's a different issue. When you get the handbook, you have to sign for it. It's assumed you're going to read it. Since you are not the appointing authority, then what your vote should be is to recommend to the Board of Selectmen...
That's right.
That he be removed because of lack of attendance.
Yeah, and we can put that in writing.
That's what you need to do, because the Board of Selectmen appointed him as an associate member.
I thought the handbook said that we could remove him if he didn't attend.
You're not the appointing authority. The authority, the appointing authority for the town of Dayton is the Board of Selectmen with the exception of the fire department. With, with the exception of the fire department, because we have a strong chief one. All I'm saying to you is, first of all, if you're going to take this action, you've got to make sure the individual has been notified, okay? The other thing too is, you should notify the appointing authority that you want them to take this action. If you had a vacancy and you wanted somebody appointed, you would, if you had a number of applicants, you would screen them and select one and you would vote to recommend that the Board of Selectmen take the action.
Yeah, that was what I discussed today with the Selectmen's Office that...
You discussed it with who?
I discussed exactly what Lancey was saying.
I just, I saw her here and...
So, it's your committee. You have concerns about attendance, so you take the initial action to notify the appointing authority.
The Select.
Excuse me?
I said, we took action. Now we notify the Select we'd like to have him removed.
That's not what the wording in your motion was, gentlemen. That's why I'm trying to stop you before the vote is called. You voted basically to take him off the committee. The vote is, you need to amend the motion that says you want, that your vote is to notify the Board of Selectmen that you want this individual removed because of lack of attendance.
Got it. I make a motion that we remove Frank Christofili as an associate member or vote to, ask the Selectmen to remove Frank Christofili as an associate member for lack of attendance. He hasn't attended in over a year, closer to two. My motion.
That's getting closer.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, you're going, but we have to rewrite it right now.
A lot of attention tonight.
Okay, tell me what you want it to say. I'll send the email right now. We have time. Actually, Charlie, send me the wording, because you're taking the minutes, right? Taking the minutes? Send me, okay.
Writing away.
All right.
The, the meeting is being recorded, correct?
It is.
So, you can listen to it and get the wording correct, right? The other thing you need to do, actually, you should have done it before the last motion, is to withdraw the second on the original motion. Withdraw the motion itself and then that's the motion that you just made that would take care of it. Because right now, you've got two rec, you've got two votes on record. The first one you want to get rid of. You want the second one to apply.
You have to both get rid of the first one?
Yeah.
So, you need to rescind that motion where it said the Board was going to remove him.
Yeah.
Because now, what you voted to is to notify the Selectmen of what you want them to do. So, the motion should be to rescind the motion that the Board made to remove that gentleman from the Board. That was the first motion. The other motion you just made is okay, but right now, you've got two votes on record. The first one's got to be removed.
I, I, I have to think of how the first one went.
We just read it right off the...
No, 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 the second one, I'm, second one I'm, I'm clear on. I move that we rescind the motion, that we rescind the vote of this commission to remove Frank Christofili from the commission.
Stop there. You need a second. That one made the first one, because the second one's good.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, now, it's, technicalities can sometimes...
I understand. It can get confusing. No question about it.
Okay.
Good thing you're here tonight.
I'm not even here for that reason.
I think she wanted, she wanted to listen to Josh.
I think there is parliamentarian in the answer.
I have a question. I have a question. Would let, not related to Frank Christofili. Are we going to have a peer reviewer do a stormwater? It seems redundant that we have to do this again twice.
Yes, we have.
No, no, that's not what I said. I said, the Stormwater Committee has its own health agent. Our health agent happens to be a P E. He's certainly qualified. He reviews all plans that come before the Stormwater Committee, because he has to make recommendations to us. So, when a set of plans comes into the Stormwater Committee, they're reviewed by him, Janagia, Tom Ferry, all key people who would be involved with the project. When he does his review, if he has notes, he writes everything down and states exactly what it is he's looking for. They would go back to the proponent, the developer, whoever, all right, hoping that corrections would be made. We would only be looking for a peer review if the material that was presented to us, let's say, the changes that he felt were necessary didn't get made or if you had a couple of parties who were, were battling with one another or things like that. All I wanted that gentleman to know, since he didn't seem to think Stormwater Committee was going to be involved, is that yes, we will be and if our Stormwater Agent in reviewing the plans feels that the appropriate measures are not taken, taken, he's going to speak up. Whether it's Plan Board's third party or your third party, he'll be looking for additional information, right? All I'm saying is, if they're at odds and neither one of them are in agreement with the kind of stuff he's looking at or that he's suggesting, it's a possibility. But, we're not going to get involved with, with telling you who to hire or the Plan Board either, all right?
I liked your comment about him persuading you or us to take his choice.
We, we don't, we don't do that, all right? We're fortunate that Stormwater Agent is a P E. That's not what we paid him for. But, he is well qualified and he looks at all of our plans, because he's the one that has to give us the, if you will, the technical advice about whether it's drainage or things of that nature, okay? So, it's, it's good to know in effect that the town of Dayton actually has somebody on board who is a P E, even though he's not officially the town engineer, but he certainly is qualified.
Thank you, Nancy. Got it.
Do you want to take the next item out of order? So, it'd be item five?
The guy standing in the hallway, is that?
Yeah, but that's not on till eight o'clock.
Oh.
Do you want to take the next item out of order?
Sure.
Item five, which is the Board, Board and Committee Handbook?
Okay.
Wait a minute. Number five.
Daniel Page? Daniel Page?
No, it's item five, Board and Committee Handbook. I made copies for everybody and...
Okay, here.
Yeah, we're all supposed to sign. When I got hired, I signed the back.
Okay.
That's what I just showed you, that item on the Selectmen appointing authority. Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Mr. LaPage?
Um, wait a minute, no. Okay, let, let us do the...
The next item?
No, 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 that's, that's Reed Brothers, but we're going to...
Not here.
I move, I move that we take the item concerning Board and Committee Handbook, uh, next out of order from the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, Lisa, you want to just...
Oh, I just said, yeah, I, I just made you guys copies and you're supposed to review it and sign the back.
We voted to take the items out of order.
But you don't have to sign it today. You just, yeah, you just have to take, review it, okay? And then sign it at some point and drop that off to the Town Hall. I don't believe Daniel Page is here, by the way.
I sent mine in already.
You're on the ball.
Today's the 29th?
Yep.
Can I give it, oh, you know, look at the, there tomorrow, okay. I'll get to it sometime.
Is it the same as last year?
I don't know. I wasn't here last year. Probably, the one I got January 1st.
Okay, is there something else that we can do next?
We can continue, we, we actually voted to continue, to take Frank out of order. So, I think we should, we can continue to take everything else out of order if you want to wait for the Reed Brothers. I didn't see a point of order, so I feel pretty...
Outback is here to present the plans, but the meeting isn't on until eight o'clock, so that's up to you if you want to hear it early.
I couldn't hear you.
Outback is here to present Reed Brothers' plan.
Yes.
But the hearing isn't listed till 8:00 P.M., so we can take, take the other things out of order and then hear them at eight.
I'll tell you this, this is the last time I put times on hearings.
You have to list the time, because if you got it, it's a public hearing, you got to put it in the paper. There has to be a time.
After, 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 after. Works like a charm.
Charlie way. So, the next one is Daniel Page.
I know who he is.
He's not here. He said he might not be able to make it, because he was going to be in, on the Cape. So, he never ended up making it, apparently.
Well, I'm glad the young man is interested, but we already have an associate member. Until we need another associate member, I...
Wait, we, we, doesn't say we can only have one.
You can have two.
The table only fits so many people.
We'll bring up a chair.
We, we...
It just seems a waste.
Mr. LaPage has some unique experiences that we should take into consideration.
Um, well, maybe we should just put that till next meeting. Let's just...
Ask him to come to the next meeting to meet us anyway.
He's going to come to the next, next meeting.
I think the commission should have some more opinions from different people, especially qualified people. And I, and I feel Mr. LaPage has got some pretty decent qualifications. And he can also, he has the unique ability to be in two places at the same time. There's not many people that can do that.
But we don't know if the young man's qualified or not. But if he's interested, that would be, that's fine with me. I, I appreciate people that are interested.
Me too. That, that's why I would like to see him on board.
Adding associate members. That's just my view.
I think you missed my point when I said, he has the ability to be in two places at the same time.
Yeah, I was trying to figure that one out, Bill.
Good. He's got a twin brother.
His twin didn't apply.
I want that on record too. And the minutes.
Are we going to be taking things out of order? Are we going to go?
No, we, let's get it done.
Allow this gentleman to speak at eight, 7:45.
Go ahead.
There's no reason why he has to sit here for 15 minutes.
Well, I mean, in case someone in the public was coming.
If they show up at eight o'clock, you're going to have to start over, guys. You can't stop the hearing before the posted time.
Right.
So, you've got to take stuff out of order or declare a recess. Pick one or the other.
Let's get, let's take the next one out of order.
Go to it.
Okay, I move that we take Brandon Fanoff's Ecosystem Solutions on Hunter Hill Peer Review out of order.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, Lisa, you have something to...
I didn't put this on the agenda. Charlie did.
Charlie?
We received a copy and I forwarded it to everybody, right?
Yes.
You, everybody get a copy of the Hunter's Hill review, okay? That's all we need to discuss. We don't need to talk about it, because it's not a public... We didn't continue the hearing till this date. We continued it to August 19th.
Okay, so, we just have, we just have the information to review at home?
Yep.
Okay.
And I personally just reviewed it and sent back my comments to him on it.
Continue, okay. So, actually, it's already continued, so we're just, it was just notification, okay? I move that we take Ecosystem Solutions, the, their invoice out of order from the agenda.
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries.
Okay, Lisa, what do you have for us on that? They want $2,362.50 for the...
Yeah, but they also said they're probably going to need more money.
Right there.
Hey, Hunter's Hill Peer Review. How much did we get from Hunter's Hill so far?
Five thousand.
Five thousand?
Yes.
Well, I mean, if, if they want $2,300, we still got roughly $2,700, a little bit less than $2,700 to deal with. So, do we wait till that's gone down or do we?
I would think that be prudent to pay the bill.
Yeah, just pay the bill. That's all you need to do today.
Okay.
This is just Ecosystems bill. It's not the engineering. It's got nothing to do with engineering.
Oh, this is a peer review?
Right.
Yeah, for Hunter's Hill.
Okay, I move that we pay Ecosystems $2,362.50 for their peer review to date for Hunter's Hill.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, question. This bill is about $4,304.
That's next.
No, no, that's the next item.
That's a separate bill. That's a separate bill.
That's a separate bill for a separate project, yes.
Okay.
Okay, you got this one here?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I don't want to get it. I'm going to write.
I've got it. I've got it.
Got it there somewhere.
Okay.
Ecosystems, Brandon Fanoff understands what's going on here. There's funding available for this project at Broad Cove, along with the flagging that has already taken place. I'm not going to go into for funding until I've got the engineered plans from Principi Engineering, who is the, is the engineer working with Brandon Fanoff. When I get both invoices from Brandon and Principi, then I will go for... then I will go for funding for that project.
Could you tell us a little bit more about the project? I mean, we look at Broad Cove, we own land on the project in the area.
Can't read your lips, Jim.
We, could you give us a bit more information on this project? We own several parcels and, and we, and some of that land is segmented by private ownership. Could you tell us about...
Well, everything that we're going to do on this project, we're gonna do on the land we own.
So what are they, what actually is he doing then?
Well, the engineer hasn't done a damn thing yet, but Brandon has flagged the wetlands, and that's what this bill is for. And when I get a bill from the engineering company for the engineered plan, then I'll go for funding for the whole project. I don't wanna go, I don't wanna go for Brandon's money and then a month later go for the engineer's money.
So this is gonna be funded from a separate account?
No, no, the, the flagging and the engineering will be from one, from one group. What's the, the river people.
Totten River Stewardship Group or Wild and Scenic Committee?
Yes, the Wild and Scenic People.
Who? Who gave the order for this project? I don't, I don't recall it being, going through the Commission.
I don't either, but...
No one, no one has taken an interest in this project except me for the last 30 years. And you know, you knew exactly what I was gonna do. You knew how I was gonna do it.
Wait, no, this...
You're telling me, us, that we didn't vote for this project and we're gonna pay?
You know, you know, I just told you there's funding for this project that's available to me. I can't, I don't wanna go for money for Brandon right now. I wanna do it both together.
Okay, bro, okay.
I wanna do the engineering fee and Brandon's fee all together in one shot with the Wild and Scenic People.
Let's just say that the engineer...
Not gonna cost you 10 cents.
Well, that's what I wanted to know. So this Commission or this town is not paying this money?
Exactly.
Oh, that's all I wanted to know.
Oh, I thought you understood.
No. Did you, did you understand it?
I've been saying it over and over and over again.
I didn't, I didn't know why we got a bill. I didn't know what he was doing down in Broad Cove.
I, why, I don't know why we got the bill, then. It should be forwarded to the... Okay, so, but it shouldn't be on our agenda?
Well, he sent it to the Commission.
If you want me to explain it to you, I just did. But I have a copy of the bill right here, and that's all I need. I'm waiting for the copy of the bill for the engineering...
But it shouldn't be on our agenda because the Dighton Conservation Commission did not approve nor will it pay. Agency X is gonna pay for it.
Right.
Okay, so what we can do is remove this completely, then, from our agenda because it's a, it's a non-item for us in this Commission. Wait, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, I sure do.
Hi, Mel.
Go ahead.
You've already got it on the posted agenda. You just remove it, you just take no action on it.
Well, that's...
Period.
Okay.
You'll have to come to every one of our meetings, Nancy, so that we can stay on the straight and narrow. Okay.
Now you see how much help we need, you should show up more often.
All right, all right. I make the motion that we take no action on the invoice number W-21-1470-1 by Ecosystems.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I don't wanna get the bills anymore, thank you.
Okay.
It's still not 8:00, is you gonna sit there for five more minutes? We don't have anything else to do. Nancy?
Chairman.
We're done with our agenda. It's 5:00.
No, you can have public input, because that's my idea. Public input, you have discussion on items that are on your agenda, but there's supposed to be an item on the agenda that's public input. And the purpose of public input is so that there is someone in the audience who wishes to speak to the Commission or the Board about an item, whether it's an informational item or it's a request to put it on a future agenda. That's what public input is for. You don't vote on public input, or you...
It'll be on our next agenda, Nancy.
Excuse me?
It'll be on our next agenda, public input.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, may I address the Board under public input?
Thank you.
So what I really came here tonight to talk to you about, at one of your previous meetings, the remark was made about the authority of the Stormwater Committee and whether or not they were in charge of the enforcing the bylaw and the regulations.
Yes.
Okay. I wanna read the first thing, the first paragraph. Section 1, Responsibility for Administration. "The Board of Health shall implement and administer the rules and regulations formulated under the provisions of the Stormwater Bylaw. The Board of Health may appoint an employee, an agent, a board, or a commission as designated to carry out in part or in total specific duties as provided for in the town's Stormwater Bylaw." That's where the Stormwater Committee came from, and it's under the authority of the Board of Health in this bylaw that we act, okay? The other thing you referenced was the role of the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
Okay. So under Section 7, Land Disturbance and Pre/Post Construction Runoff Control. If you go to Item B, Administration, it says, "The Dighton Planning Board shall administer, implement, and enforce this section of the regulations as it pertains to any development activities requiring Planning Board approval. Notwithstanding, however, the Dighton Zoning Board of Appeal shall administrate, enforce, and issue any permits required by this regulation or the town's Stormwater Bylaw for any activities associated with an application for a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23." The Dighton Conservation Commission
Yes.
shall administer, implement, and enforce this section of the regulations as it pertains to Massachusetts Wetlands Regulations or the Town of Dighton Wetlands Bylaw.
Right.
Not the Stormwater Bylaw, all right? That's a separate thing.
Yep.
Now, any powers granted to or duties imposed upon the Planning Board or the Conservation Commission may be delegated in writing to its employees or agents. Henceforth, the Dighton Planning Board and the Conservation Commission shall be referred to as the administering authority of Section 7, Land Disturbance and Pre/Post Construction Runoff. So you're not totally responsible for the whole thing, you're responsible for a section of it. Because the remark you made, we were gonna get our butts kicked. And when I saw that, I almost fell off my chair because I thought, what, see, I think the other thing that you need to be aware of, when this was written, the Board of Selectment was the Board of Health. We all know that this whole bylaw and regulations things got written because the town, the town got fined by the EPA for non-compliance with their, with their notice of intent and not filing the proper MS4s and making progress, okay? Past history. This got written up until we split the Boards of Selectment and Health, okay? The Board of Selectment was the Board of Health, so the three of us together were responsible for this. When we talked about all the Boards and Commissions, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, it was not to relieve the Board of Health from its obligations in total under this. It was to designate certain things. You've got the wetlands, you've got the town's bylaw, all of that. No interference with that from the Board, the Selectment Board of Health or, at this point in time, the Stormwater Committee. Whatever the Planning Board has to enforce, so forth, so, not interference. What has happened since then, we split the two boards. The Board of Health is not an elected board, it's an appointed board. So because the Board of Health can appoint agents, commissions, committees, whatever, because of the amount of work that has become involved with stormwater, that's when they decided, they went to the Board of Selectment and said they wanted a Stormwater Committee. And we specifically picked the job titles of the, not the people, the job titles of who would serve on that committee. And we have also added your agent. Now, when it talks about the CONCOM, you've appointed a conservation agent who can go out and do inspections and take action. She does not have to wait for the Board to have a meeting to go out and do an inspection or to cite somebody for violations. She works closely with the Stormwater Committee and with the people on our committee who do inspections, all right? So, pretty much, when something's coming up, we have a member of, we have the health agent, a voting member, and we have a member, the Chairman of the Board of Health also sits on that, so they know what's going on. So all of us together, there are seven members on the Board that can vote. We have specialists that we call in. Mrs. Caldonia is one of them, she attends our meeting. The town administrator is another one, he's a non-voting member. We've also at times called in the fire chief, the police chief, and we would call in any other town official that we needed specifically. In addition to Mrs. Caldonia representing you as far as doing inspections and working with our stormwater agent, the Chairman of the Conservation Commission sits on that Stormwater Committee, too. So my point in being here tonight is, I think there was a misunderstanding about what this bylaw specifically says. There was, there was a misunderstanding about your role, the Planning Board role, the Stormwater Committee role, and what the Board of Health can do, all right? Technically, we're all individual and separate boards, but in, in fact, we all have to work together because of the kind of things we work together that, that kinda come together, all right? I've gone out and done site inspections with somebody from CONCOM. Mrs. Caldonia's been there, the health agent's been there. I remember Jim coming out to one of them. So it, it really depends on who's available when we go out. But again, I just wanted to publicly state, number one, the Stormwater Committee has the powers and duties that this enforcement of the bylaw regs, and nobody's gonna kick our butt, quite frankly.
It just doesn't seem like you had the authority to do what you're doing.
Yeah, we do.
And it just, it aggravates me a bit because some of the things that we've approved years ago are being, are back on the board again. How can that be?
If they're related to the town's stormwa, excuse me, if they're related to the town's Wetlands Bylaw or the, the Mass, the Mass Law, the one I'm thinking of, Wetlands Act, Wetlands Protection Act.
WPA.
It's a cast in stone. Town bylaws do not affect the, the state laws, the federal laws. If in order, in order for a change to happen in the Town of Dighton Wetlands Bylaw, it would have to be proposed, it would have to go to a town meeting and have to be voted, and then it would have to go to the Attorney General for final approval. The town's Stormwater Bylaw went through that whole process, made it all the way through, okay? What we are going to do, right now, we're working on, we'll be working on our MS4 because it's due in September on the, based on our notice of intent that we filed three years ago. But what we're going to do is go back and further clarify regulations about powers and duties. Whether or not we have to change the bylaw, I don't know at this point. If there are proposed changes to the bylaw, they must go to town meeting.
I would think it would be the right thing to do.
Well, again...
Because why should people have to come process the same thing and do different? If your Stormwater Committee wants to do stormwater, then you should do it. We shouldn't have to be bothered with it. That's my point.
No, it depends on, on, quite frankly, it depends on who out there, what agency says you must do thus and so. Although everybody says it's DEP, no, in Massachusetts, it's EPA. Massachusetts and New Hampshire are the only states in this country where the EPA has primacy for stormwater, okay? When we submit our notice of intent, which we did three years ago, and it's good for 10 years, and the annual reports that we send in, they go to the EPA with a copy to DEP. That is only Massachusetts and New Hampshire that do that. Everyone else in the country reports to their state, if you will, equivalent of their DEP, all right? But all I'm saying to you is, to address what I heard on television that night, there is no question at all about what we're doing. When we get into discussing things as far as, again, you have somebody from your, your Board, your Commission, sitting on the committee, okay? You have an agent that works with us, works with our stormwater agent, all right? And one of the things that we have set out to do from day one is not to duplicate services and not to duplicate permits. We issue permits, there's, there's fees attached to those permits. We don't issue permits for the sake of collecting fees, all right? So that's another thing that we try to avoid. But everything that we do, as it, everything filters through, it all comes back to basically this. So what we need to do down the road is we will further clarify the fact that the Board of Selectment and the Board of Health are now two separate, different Boards. One's elected, one's appointed. And, but it's not gonna change that the Board of Health is totally responsible for stormwater. That isn't gonna change. It's gotta stay there. Because what we find in other communities, they assign it to different people. One person being given this job is a nightmare, quite frankly.
Right now, we're gonna be dealing with Forest Hills.
Correct.
We're gonna, we're gonna go through the process, we're gonna do stormwater, and then what's gonna happen?
You are going to look at what specifically falls under your jurisdiction.
Yep.
The plans are gonna come in. Our, our stormwater agent, Mr. Pilling, who's a PE...
It's gonna be after we, we approve it, or...
No, hopefully, they're all gonna come at the same time, so if there's discussion, we all know what we're discussing.
That's much better, Nancy. It just seems to be, it seemed to me that it wasn't, it's okay, you can wait another five minutes.
We've got to, no, no, actually, let's recess this because we're already late. The 8:00 hearing has to happen. So we'll come back to this after you take care of this, this hearing that's scheduled for 8:00, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, Eric. Good, how are you? We're here to open the hearing for the Reed Brothers Limited Partnership on William Street.
Yeah, you, you prop that up on a chair and get it, there's only three of us here, so you can bring it.
So it's actually not a hearing, I just wanna make a correction. It's more of a meeting because we didn't have him file a notice of intent for this.
Lisa.
We didn't have him file a notice of intent for this yet. So this is just preliminary discussions
All right.
on the mitigation plan.
Great, Drake, I'm from Effec Engineering, working for Reed Brothers to...
Happy to have you.
fix his issues. So basically, this is an overhaul with only dirt gravel driveway that goes out to the back fire of the property. And we have identified five different areas, key areas that, where there was, it's alterations, obviously, that were not permitted. And in all of them, we're gonna move all existing soil that was, you know, dead mud piles and any construction debris that's gonna be removed off-site. It's all been brought back to the existing grades that were there. And then either be, in this case, in this area, it's outside the baffert, we'll be seeded with a wetland seed mix. In other areas, which I'll show in more detail in this side, the four different areas, it's gonna be replanted with native plants and basically brought back to being the wetland, with plants that are indigenous to that area.
Could you flip the map back, please? Okay, I'm looking, okay, William Street is close to you. The, the, the river is on the bottom.
Yes.
Okay, the, okay, you have the 200-foot riverfront boundary?
Yeah.
Okay, and where's your wetland flagging?
All the wetland flags run right along, basically, the driveway goes right through the wetland, so there's flags. All these are flags going...
They use the old flag... They use the old flag line from what, three, four years ago?
Four years ago, yeah.
So, did you replenish them?
Yes, they put them all back, um, so they're all staked back out onto the.
Okay.
Onto the site. They all run right along the, you know, the gravel drive just the way.
So, where the drive has been widened, it will be returned to its original width?
Correct.
Where the, um, in some areas, like you, you have one place where, where practically makes contact with the river. Right in the middle of your, yeah, right there.
Yeah, that's an area where we proposed to, um, there's boulders and stuff, there are excess boulders. We're gonna shore up that area because there, there is a bit of a steep slope. So, any, so in that area, and then over here, there's a culvert which got, um, under this repair. We're gonna replace that culvert, and it needs some boulders in that area because it's a little bit.
Okay, and where all that debris was dumped, the, uh, the, the, the rock, the, uh, construction material and all that, where, where is that on this map?
All the way to the right, right there.
Okay, right there, okay.
And so, we, but actually, if you go up there now, you'll see where the original wetland stakes are. We did it way back in 17, and it shows obviously that this whole area was filled. Well, you can see it, the, all the construction debris, and so, the idea is that we can, you know, we have the grades from those flags, so we can bring the grade back to, or when, when you take all the material out, you're gonna see the, the wetland soils anyways, and we can replant that all with wetland land.
So, within six inches or so of the elevation of the existing wetland?
Yeah, it should be, I mean, it's gonna be, because we have, we only flagged the wetland at that time. You know, we didn't do a, we have spot grades, but the spot grades for the wetland flags are there. So, we're gonna know the difference between.
Yeah.
Here and there. Because we've also done the grading here now, and it's, you know, obviously, it rolls up and down because of all the piles of stuff.
Okay, there's the stretch between where it touches the river and there, and go east. Okay, that's, that's actually right there. Approximately, how wide is the drive at that, the original drive at that point?
It's probably.
Eight, 10 feet?
Yeah, it's around eight, 10, 12 feet, something like that. You can put a.
Okay, no.
Make it comfortable through there.
Okay, and then it was widened out another additional two feet or something like that? Three feet?
Yeah, and, well, obviously, more.
No, no, I'm just talking about in that narrow area.
He doesn't have it widened, showing, he's not showing it as widened on this plan, only a portion at the beginning and at the end.
So, you know, widen, we're trying to shore it up so.
Yeah.
Keep it as.
Right, but he's talking about mitigation, yeah. I would like these areas all staked out, and then we could do a site visit.
So, the, uh, you want.
The mitigation, all the restoration areas staked out, and then we'll go take a look at it.
Yeah, but, I mean, if it's, if it's not all staked and, uh...
All the flags are there, so it's gonna be easy enough to identify it, and we can put some, some stakes.
Yeah, turf flags.
Lisa, you, you've been monitoring this?
Yeah.
Project?
So, yeah, he's, they've been out there for, for the past few months. I mean, there's a, there's a gate up, well, a chain up now.
Okay.
That's been there for a while, I guess.
So, they haven't removed any of the debris in the back yet, right?
No, they haven't, they haven't done anything, they're waiting for.
No, because they can fix the road.
They wanna.
So, that makes it.
They get, get that, they could do that, but I think they wanna get everything cleared up and do it the right way once, so not have to come back.
Yeah, and I would like to see some monitoring included with, with the whole. So, you guys are gonna file a notice of intent for this, just so you know.
Okay, no, that's, that's why we're here, they wanted to get you the plan, so.
Yeah, notify the butters, everybody knows what's going on, and then... Um, but if you want to stake out the areas, and we could set up a preliminary meeting on site, so then, we can try to clarify any of the problems before you guys file an notice of intent.
Okay.
Is Mr. Poyant coming back?
Um, I think only if we wanted him to, but, I mean, it might be a good idea to have Andrew there.
It was Andrew Poyant from DEP, you were there that day, Jim, who said that the road had to be fixed before they remove any of the stuff because the road was, uh, would not be able to handle the heavy trucks that would be hauling out the.
Let's see, he must be tied to have those, those.
Culvert, yeah, yeah.
I, I don't remember him saying that.
I do.
But if the trucks, if the trucks went in there with it, it's, it's not gonna be, uh...
No, but as he said, one of those culverts got crushed, that's why they're going to repair it. And I remember, I remember two specific areas that Mr. Poyant pointed to.
It was, it was the crossing.
And it was the, the place where it was so close, close to the river that, and the other one was that culvert that he talked about.
Yeah, we definitely told them not, that's why I asked specifically.
Okay, so we, we can do a review of it, and that, and when the plan is, uh, proposed, that would be the first thing to, uh, be corrected so that the, um, trucks can go in there to remove the debris and excess fill along the roadway elsewhere.
But, um.
We, probably order it on the.
Yeah. And, you know, um, monitoring, two-year monitoring. I like the planting scheme, seems like it'll work if it's monitored and it's graded properly, you know?
I would imagine that you're gonna wanna inspect, you know.
Yeah.
Before all plantings go in, you, things like that.
Yeah, and I don't wanna look at the plants too, because I've had a situation in town recently where they were gonna plant the wrong blueberries, and it's like, would've been a waste of a lot of money. You planted low bush, but you needed high bush. Yeah, um, so, we could actually have a site visit. We could post it, and we could go out there after they stake it out, if you wanted to.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Okay.
So, you basically wanna state where the, uh, because it's the erosion control, is where the erosion control is going, and you wanna see where that is, and because the flags are there, the flags are, aren't staked.
The limits, I'd like the, all the limits of the mitigation areas clearly staked, fluorescent or something, so when we go out there, it's easy to see, you know?
Yeah, we can figure something out.
Yeah. But thank you, it's a very, step in the right direction.
So, all right, so we will be, uh, waiting to hear from you so we can make a site visit. Then, it will be followed by a notice of intent.
Okay.
Okay, Nancy, I think you're back up.
I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
This is, this is a prime example of a site visit that had number of people from different boards. The stormwater committee was notified of the dumping problem, the erosion, the, the road going in, so forth and so on. So, we all went out as we could for that visit. Mr. Poyant was there from DEP, okay? Mr. Reed was there, we walked the whole length, and, uh, there was somebody else with a break. Mr. Logan was with him. Uh, but anyhow, what you have just heard is the result of that visit. What you've just heard is what the plans are to do this. The next thing now is gonna be a site visit. And when that is set up, Lisa will let the stormwater committee know, and if anybody can go, that's fine. In the end, what is going to happen is exactly what you're asking for because the stormwater committee is gonna say, we don't have anything because everything we would've addressed is covered by CONCOM, and it's in that plan. So, that's my point. We don't step on one another's toes. A stormwater permit is not needed.
I, 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 I understand that completely. What works is that people have come before this commission, got stormwater approval, and now they're going back and doing things again. It just didn't seem fair to me, Nancy.
No, wait a minute, when you say they got stormwater approval, what are you talking about?
We, we issue an order of conditions for the property. And, and we, they make stormwater.
Like Brook Street, you mean, for example? Brook Street, is that an example? Was it?
They present a plan, we approve the plan, and then four years later, they make changes to the plan. It just, just doesn't seem like.
Who makes changes to the plan?
On William Street. We approved that plan three years ago.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, what, we're on Brook Street, and who are we talking?
We're talking about redundancy here.
No, no, pick one. Are we talking about the Brook Street solar farm or some other place? What project on William Street are we talking about?
We're talking about the project right now, the fellow that was here tonight.
The solar farm?
Well, forefront. We never reviewed it for stormwater, Charlie, Conservation never did.
And actually.
Conservation.
Is it the, is it the sto, the, the farm up behind, excuse me? There's two solar farms up behind the Rouge's farms. It's not one farm, it's two?
Yes.
Okay. What was brought to us strictly relates to solar farms. The reason why the stormwater committee gets involved is because everything that is done that ends up in a permit being issued by the stormwater committee to control not only the, the project, but also maintenance of the stormwater basins, also is involved with the actual building permit, okay? All of these things come together, and if they wanna pilot agreement for taxes, it's all connected to those documents that have been issued. They're all tied together. If, in fact, you had approved a plan for stormwater, it has never been presented to the stormwater committee, and she's telling me it didn't happen.
It did.
Therefore, that's why we're there. I'll, I'll even back up further. Richmond Hill, there's two solar farms up there. We call it DG Dayton One, which is the one right near Mr. Carr's house where the driveway is.
Yeah.
That's phase one.
That was Kingsley's.
That's the one that just got approved for a pilot agreement at the town meeting in June. They built another bigger farm behind that. That's phase two. They tried to tie it to phase one, and we said, no, no, no. You got your permit and all your paperwork and your pilot agreement for phase one. You gotta come back for the other one. That was not covered in the original plan. That's how we get involved. If, in fact, there is a viable stormwater plan on file that's been approved by you, it would have to come to the stormwater committee for review and a site visit to make sure there haven't been changes, if it's been three or four or five years.
Yeah.
We'd have to go back and see. Is, is, are the conditions there now, the conditions that were there when the stormwater committee first went up?
Aren't we gonna be dealing with stormwater issues in Forest Hills?
That's what I told the gentleman when he thought you didn't have to be there.
So.
Can I just interrupt? Are we all set, are we all set?
I just have one comment. The Japanese knotweed that we wanna get rid of out there, it's gonna be a nightmare.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
So, you're gonna propose to remove some soil in there? Because we don't wanna add a bunch of chemicals because it's in an ORW. So, we gotta think about that. I've been told.
Yeah, that's why I kinda didn't do, you know, a definitive thing, you know?
From what my experience is, the more you dig down, the better. I don't wanna see a bunch of chemicals out there, okay?
Also, if you constantly cut it, keep it down below, you get suffocated.
No, Tommy says if you continue to mow it, you will kill it eventually, but it takes a long time.
And you can do a weed cloth, but then we'll never get our, we'll never get our mitigation planted. You know what I mean?
Yeah, so it's.
So, we have to talk about that.
Yeah.
Thank you, have a good weekend.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have this, Nancy, so this is an example where they can see that there's CONCOM. One of the first items on the stormwater committee permit.
Nancy, are you all set? We're paying Lisa overtime now.
No, you're not. You can't afford me. If you look at, if you look at the top of this, all right, this is a stormwater permit, okay? Conservation Commission Order of Conditions will be recorded prior to pre-construction meeting, and proof of recording submitted to the stormwater committee. If that has been done, all the stormwater committee would do is just look at it, see if there's any questions, okay? If there have been changes in what, that originally issued, either you go back and fix it, or we'll do it, all right?
Got it.
Okay? But, um, provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWIP. That's part of our notice of intent, that's part of what, that's what part of EPA requires. Pre-construction meeting, we did this, oh, that, um, well, Brook Street, because that's the latest solar thing, uh, obviously utilized, that's controlled. Except that, the problem was, it got approved by everybody until it got to the stormwater committee, where the question was raised, who gave them permission to cross town property? What? You can't give them permission to cross town property. Only the Board of Selectmen have to get involved with this. So, I said, this is like a reverse easement. Instead of you saying to somebody, we wanna pay you for easement, the solar development needed permission to cross town property, that little ditch.
Yep.
That drainage ditch.
Yep.
We had to, I contacted the town council, they drafted what is called a license agreement. It's like, I don't know, five, six, seven pages long. It tells them what they can do. It tells them that they can put that culvert in. It tells them it must be reviewed, removed. When the solar farm, that's the last thing they remove. No one else can enter that property. For example, if they eventually take the channels up, that culvert's gone. It's not gonna be there for somebody else to access that property. So, there was all of the drainage and everything that went with that. So, once we got into that, okay? And then we also, the other thing that had to happen, they didn't know where the water line was until we started digging. And then they had to relocate the water line on, you know, on that corner. So, that was another thing. And then they started clearing land, and we had that monsoon hurricane, whatever that storm was. And there was runoff, and we were all up there about that. And they did take measures to, uh, control it, but initially, it was... So, the other thing too is, we also have ongoing inspections when we have a, a, a little live project, okay? So, the last thing that happened was, three of the individuals who worked for Grasshopper finally could leave Canada, they came down here and visited the site last Monday. So, we were all down there last Monday. Uh, stormwater committee, uh, the police chief was there, because the other thing that was tied into this was details. So, every department that had something to say about the project, the only thing that couldn't make it was the fire chief because he had to be, uh, out of town relative to the new fire truck. But, there's a case in that project, we brought in the chief of police, we brought in, we brought in the fire chief, because the way that they originally designed that culvert, when the fire chief looked at it, he says, there's no way I can drive up, uh, Brook Street and make a wide turn to get into that property, and that culvert's gotta be 20 feet wide. And at the construction meeting, they said it was 16, and we said, no, it's 20. The fire chief said, 20, you will not build anything except for 20. But anyhow, those are the kind of things stormwater gets involved with. And we will follow it.
I give up, Nancy.
For a while.
I give up. You're right.
So, so we'll just work together.
Reading that bylaw just says, what the hell are they doing?
Okay.
Well.
Change the bylaw and say the stormwater committee is responsible for stormwater.
Lisa.
Yeah.
Beta, you're gonna notify Beta that they're the, that they're the chosen one?
Okay, yeah.
And, we, do we have money on a 53G account already for them?
Yes.
Yes.
Forest Hills, really?
So, we have a, a 53G for, yes.
I don't know, you're in charge of 53G, Charlie.
Start with five grand.
Or 10 grand.
Oh, yeah, we asked for at least five, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, um.
Okay.
I'll connect them.
Okay.
I'll connect, um, Outback with Beta.
Outback with Beta, no, Outback?
Outback, yeah, representing Forest Hills.
Oh, no, okay, no, no, I'm thinking.
Jason Youngquist.
I think, no, I thought it was, uh, the engineer from the planning board that you're gonna connect with, who's doing their, no, okay.
Beta, you guys voted to hire Beta tonight.
Right.
Right, so, I am connecting Outback, who's the applicant's representative.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, all right. Okay, now, uh, I'm thinking the engineer, so the engineer knows that Beta is gonna be doing, doing our side of it. Contrary to.
You mean planning board's engineer?
I'm sorry?
Planning board engi?
Yeah.
No, we don't need to.
We don't need to, okay.
No.
You'll find out.
I'll let them know that they're not, they're not hired.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then, if, are we done, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we close the hearing at, uh, 8:30.
Second it.
At 29.
Beautiful.
Hold on, favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Host, motion carries. Motion carries.